I'll call this meeting to order. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is an open meeting of the Sioux Nebraska governing body. The city of Sioux abides by the Nebraska Open Means Act in conducting business. A copy of the Nebraska Open Means Act is displayed on the north wall of this meeting room facility as required. Disclosure of meeting recording processes is posted in the meeting room. A participant's sign-in sheet is available for use by any citizen addressing the council. President shall approach the podium, state their name and address for the clerk's record, and are asked to limit remarks to five minutes. All remarks shall be directed to the mayor, who shall determine by whom any appropriate response shall be made. To see if your reserves are right to adjust the order of items on this agenda, necessary in may or left to take action on any of the items listed. Please call the roll.
Wilkins, Beck, Camper, Coltrum, Miller, Singleton, Streisand, Hendricks. All present.
Alright, first item this evening is the draft minutes of August 3rd, 2021.
Slow move.
We have a motion and a second. Does it include discussion? Saying none. Please register your votes. Please play the votes.
Voting in favor, Wilkins, Beck, Camper, Coltrum, Miller, Singleton, Streisand, Hendricks. Vote passes.
Next, we have the consent agenda, which makes up the next four items. Vote approved. We have a motion and a second. Does it include discussion? Saying none. Please register your votes. Please play the votes.
Voting in favor, Wilkins, Beck, Camper, Coltrum, Miller, Singleton, Streisand, Hendricks. Vote approved.
Next, we have the confirmation of mayor appointments. We have appointed members of various boards and committees. One A is the appointment of Pat Sainley to the Civic Senate Commission for a three-year term.
I'm going to motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second. Does it include discussion? Saying none. Please register your votes. Please play the votes.
Voting in favor, Wilkins, Beck, Camper, Coltrum, Miller, Singleton, Streisand, Hendricks. Vote passes.
Next, we have the appointment of Julie Moody to deputy treasurer.
Move to approve.
We have a motion and a second. Does it include discussion? Saying none. Please register your votes. Please play the votes.
Voting in favor, Wilkins, Beck, Camper, Coltrum, Miller, Singleton, Streisand, Hendricks. Vote passes.
The third appointment is to appoint Mindy Meyer to deputy city clerk. Please register your votes. Please, please play the votes.
Voting in favor, Wilkins, Beck, Camper, Coltrum, Miller, Singleton, Streisand, Hendricks. Vote passes.
Alright, next we have a public hearing. Amendment to the city of Sioux Unified Land Development Ordinance, ULDO, Chapter 410, Zoning and Subdivision, Article 35.3, Sub-D10, Residential Signs and Attachment 2, City of Sioux Sign Tables, Building Zoning and Code Enforcement Director, Tim Warwick. Welcome.
Thank you. In doing research for Concern of Residents, we discovered that we have a discrepancy in our current ULDO and the current sign table of 35C, specifically dealing with home occupation signage and the maximum size allowable. The code, the actual city code of the ULDO 410-3110, accessory uses A4 signage, which is the allowable signage under the home occupation permit, allows for a total square footage of six square feet. The sign ordinance, 410-353D10, which is sign exemptions, is six square feet or less residential. On Table 35C, it is noted under the notes 1, 2, and 3 that we state three square foot is the maximum square footage. Once we discovered this, we went back and looked, dating back to '03 ULDO. It's always been six square feet. When we updated the ULDO in 2017, changing the actual code numbers, that got switched. We went back, we looked for any reason why it was changed, and we couldn't find any reference whatsoever. So we assumed it was just a typo. When they updated it, got overlooked, and they put three instead of six. Went to the planning commission. They unanimously said, let's move it back to six. Let's make it uniform. And then there won't be any discrepancy.
Thanks, Tim. Any questions or comments from the council? It is a public hearing, so I can do the public comment portion of a public hearing at this time. Does anyone from the public wish to comment on item one? One at a time in orderly fashion? No? Alright, I'll go ahead and close the public comment portion of the public hearing return to the council for further discussion. Any questions or comments from the council? If not, I would ask if someone would like to introduce the ordinance.
I'll introduce the ordinance.
Alright, an ordinance to amend the municipal code of the city of Sioux, Chapter 410, Zoning and Subdivision, Article 35 and Attachment 2, to amend residential signs. To amend residential signs as a listed upon the sign tables. To repeal all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict to provide for an effective date to provide for publication of this ordinance in pampah form. The ordinance has been read by title that is designated as Ordinance Number 2021-18, and the title is hereby approved. I give a motion to dispossess the steward rule.
Slow move.
We have a motion and a second. Does it include further discussion? Saying none. Please register your votes. Please play the votes.
Voting in favor, Wilkins, Beck, Camper, Coltrum, Miller, Singleton, Streisand, Hendricks. Vote passes.
Again, this is ordinance number 2021-18. Would anyone like to move that this ordinance be passed and adopted as read?
I'll move.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Does it include further discussion? Saying none. Again, again, the question is should ordinance number 2021-18 be finally passed and adopted? Please register your votes. Please play the votes.
Voting in favor, Wilkins, Beck, Camper, Coltrum, Miller, Singleton, Streisand, Hendricks. Vote passes.
I believe this is the only ordinance for this evening, so only one final motion to make the ordinance a part of the permanent record.
I'll move.
We have a motion and a second. Does it include discussion? Saying none. Please register your votes. Please display the votes.
Voting in favor, Wilkins, Beck, Camper, Coltrum, Miller, Singleton, Streisand, Hendricks.
Alright, next we have our administrative items. Consideration of your resolution authorizing the signing of the annual certification of program compliance form for the Nebraska Board of Public Roads, Classifications, and Standards. Greg?
Just a resolution we send to NDOT that we're keeping an obligation of our maintenance and other requirements for the roadway, specifically the highway.
Any questions or comments from the council? Is there anything to motion? The motion is to...
We need to introduce the...
Oh, it was a resolution.
Oh, is it?
Yeah.
Sorry.
Hang on, here.
I apologize.
So I didn't mark my sheet like it normally is.
We tried.
I'll introduce the resolution. How's that?
Is it up there?
It's gonna be goofy.
What resolution number is it, Carl?
Be 19.
Nobody knows the ordinance.
It looks like this, though. We don't mark it up.
I'd say it's not our normal one.
Yeah.
It's actually a state form.
It's a state form.
Okay. I'm running out of paper.
How do you know resolution we're at?
I know, we are at 17, I know.
The previous resolution was...
The previous one was 16, so this would be 17. Okay, so we just think it's 21-17? Okay. Alright. Okay, so Jessica, you introduce the resolution?
Yes.
Okay.
21-17.
Alright. The resolution has been introduced and is designated as Resolution Number 2021-17. Would anyone like to move that this resolution be passed and adopted?
I'll move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Does it include further discussion? Saying none. Please register your votes. Please play the votes.
Voting in favor, Wilkins, Beck, Camper, Coltrum, Miller, Singleton, Streisand, Hendricks. Vote passes.
Okay, next we have a resolution removing parking on the east side of North Fifth Street, south of Robert Street. Greg?
Pursuant to a request received from a citizen and in conjunction with council member Hendricks, the traffic committee reviewed the east side of North Fifth Street. This would be generally coming out of the new Dairy Queen drive-thru. As you proceed, especially north, if the vehicles coming from, going southbound, the turn radius there gets really, really tight, and it becomes kind of a hectic situation. We already pulled traffic and parking off of the west side for most of that. And so, really, it's about passing through that area. There may be, we got a late request the other day that we had no time to look at or speak to anybody else with, on pulling it from the entire block on the side. But essentially, I think that removes parking from the entire block on all sides, except for the bump-out parking. Diagonal bump-out. And so, we can approve this one tonight, or you can tell us to go back and take a look at the whole block.
Should we talk to neighbors at all?
The neighbor that this one's in front of is in favor of it. So this one is fine.
Okay.
We know this one's okay, but there were some rentals and some other units that are along there between the old distillery slash, you name it, whatever that building is, and this property. And so, those ones, we have not made any specific contact with. But the one contained in this, the 75 feet, we're confident that the person, they were in there.
She just requested, because she knows it's from her driveway north. She asked a request from her driveway south, which there's usually two vehicles that are there before it's the, like, diagonal curbside parking. And she says sometimes coming out, depending on the time, depending on how she chooses to come out, traffic still has to stop at those two that are parked there. So she could make it, if we could make it, be that section of the street.
I would say we move forward with this one, since we know the neighbor is comfortable with this. And then, maybe look at the next one separately?
Get a trial and see how it goes. And if there's no complaints, then we're looking like it is. But if it's congested, then we'll request.
Is there a concern that it was going all the way down the street, Greg?
Our only, usually our only concern is the direct residents there. I think there's some alley access on some of those, but again, they're parking out there for a reason. And so, we need to kind of check with those tenants or property owners and just get a gauge. I mean, just springing in upon them and not letting them know. And this kind of came in late, so we weren't able to run out there.
Because the parking to the south of that tenant and on Bradford, the Bradford building, that's all street, city, 24-hour parking, correct? So they might not be aware of that, too, that they can't, you know, park in there and outside the park out front of their house, too. I'm not sure.
And again, the traffic committee hasn't reviewed it. The only thing we note is when we take parking entirely off a block, it's usually going to increase speed. As we discussed, like, with the East Sioux neighborhood the other day.
I would say proceed with it the way it is, because that's not taking off the whole block. That's just taking it off a portion, correct?
Yep. So we can proceed with that tonight, and then we can kind of kick it back to the traffic committee to make the contacts, see what the neighbors want to do, and then make a recommendation on the other portion.
Yeah.
I'll introduce the resolution.
Alright. Resolution has been introduced and is designated as Resolution Number 2021-18. Would anyone like to move that this resolution be passed and adopted?
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Does it include further discussion? Saying none. Please register your votes. Please play the votes.
Voting in favor, Wilkins, Beck, Camper, Coltrum, Miller, Singleton, Streisand, Hendricks. Vote approved.
Item number three, presentation of proposed fiscal year 2021 to 2022 budget.
Woo! Alright, here we go, folks. As the mayor once told me, don't bury the lead. I'm going to start with commending my staff. This was, again, another gigantic undertaking for us. I have with me Finance Director Nick Wolfe. For those of you who haven't met Nick yet. And Nick put in tons and tons and tons of hours and labor again this summer, getting this budget ready for you tonight, chasing many of people around, chasing me around. And this is kind of the culmination of that and the first step into getting it approved and reviewed by you guys. One of the biggest things that Nick did, and we'll kick it off right from the beginning. I'll note that you have the budget memo that was provided to you previously last week. We'll kind of use that as our guide as we go. And so, but one of the first things I want to do is get right into the budget. Mayor, if you can grab the first row of lights.
Okay.
One of the really important items, oh man, those are going to be tiny, but it's on the, is the cash summary. And this is, I'm going to scoot over and I'm going to pull this up for you a little bit here. The cash summary basically gives you from the end of the 1920 fiscal year, cash on hand in all of our different budgets, all the way through the current budget year, and then the budget that's proposed in front of you. One of the biggest things that we do is, this is usually provided to you after our first meeting, when we give the budget to the auditor, who assists us with the budget. And this year, Nick went through the entire budget document and formulated based off what he thought the auditor was doing, or what he knew the auditor was doing. He pulled all that information from the audit, previous budgets, and created this document as part of the current budget document now, and it pulls this in real time. So we can see the cash flow as we build your budgets now, rather than sitting down with you, trying to get something done and then shipping it off and seeing what the cash flow comes back at. We never had this ahead of time. We always had it after the fact. And so, you'll see on, probably the biggest ones that we talked about, don't so much in the general fund worry about these ones going horizontally. The general fund is this line right here. We start off with cash in hand, ending our current fiscal year, or the previous fiscal year, we'll even get that one, right down there, at 5.3 million approximately in the general fund. We'll end this fiscal year, we estimate, at 5.8 billion in general fund and cash on hand. And the budget we produce for you is going to end up at 4.8. That 4.8 comes in important when we start talking with you and we have that document with us, or saved, is we're looking at cash reserves to make sure that we are fiscally sound, that we're not holding too much money, but we're also not so short that if we had an emergency, a cash shortage, anything else, that we didn't have enough cash on hand. We look at that in different blocks. So we look at the general fund and then the business funds. So I'll show you those as well. And then, it's a great lead-off and kind of shows you how this works, and then you guys can ask questions about it. We'll go back and look across the board here at electric. I don't want to make this too small. Three up there. Electric ends up last fiscal year, 1920, at 4.7 million approximately, just a little below that. End of this year will be up to 5.3. Water at 3.6. We'll finish at 4.2. Sewer at 2.5. We'll finish right about 2.5. So we're right on budget there. Some of this can be from, these cash movements in the budget for this year can be from increased revenue, decreased costs, or projects that weren't completed. And so, we haven't paid out for the total of them. The proposed budget will have electric at 4.6. Water will be at 2.4. And sewer will be at 1.3. Total cash on hand, 8.4. Total cash in all budgets ending at 14.2. I will show you the next document. This is the cash reserve amounts. So we use, this is our guiding point. Again, the city has never formally adopted a cash reserve policy. So we have benchmarks and specifically say, we have to meet this formula. If we don't have this much cash, we've got to come to you and explain why we don't, or we've got to find a way in the budget to get there. And so, for the general fund, the standard practice that we use is six months operating expense, O&amp;M, minus capital expenses. And so, for the city, six months capital would be $2 million on the general fund. Oh, man. Give me all these formulas.
Escape, escape, escape. Back out.
There we go. Fix it. I got it. You've got to get out of that field, though. He's like, stop messing with my stuff.
Don't touch my stuff.
He copied everything over to a flash drive. He won't let me touch the real documents.
Don't blame me, Nick. I won't either.
He's wearing a cutie. So we, I think we said we had approximately, and I can shrink that one down again, cash on hand in the general fund at the end of the budget we're offering you at 4.8 million in cash on hand. The proposed, under our circumstances, would be two, about 2 million to have six months O&amp;M, plus debt service would be 3.1. The street funds are included in that totality. So we're well above that fund right there on that measure. The other measure would be ALM-G. That's our auditor. And they would like to see us have somewhere about 3.3, if you add the street fund and general fund together. So we're coming in, again, at that 4.8. So we feel comfortable with the budget that we're offering, that we're still way ahead of our cash reserves, and we have enough cash on hand. And if we did have an emergency or anything else, we're sufficiently held.
To put that in perspective, it wasn't that many years ago. I remember we got a cash balance of $46,000.
Yes. You were in the red. There were points in time when you didn't have any money in the bank.
It was, it was really rough. Yeah. Thank you for all your support.
I think if you use, we have a bunch of different measures. If you use different measures, you might see that to be significantly higher. I think some of the NMPP stuff would show it that way. But we have those. Same thing, business funds. If you look at electric, we look at O&amp;N, six months O&amp;M minus power purchase. Power purchase is a complete pass-through. If we bought it, that means we probably sold it to somebody. So we don't count that. And we don't count the CIP, but we do include debt service because we have to pay those debts. And so, you add those together, that's 2.1. Again, electric fund, oh, sorry. Took a little while there here with all my Excel files. Electric fund is going to end up at 4.6. So we feel comfortable there on that one. If you go down and look at NMPP's measure, they want six months O&amp;M plus debt service in the way they do it. Two, oh, wait. Is NMPP further, there they are. They want 3.6. Is what they use for our rate study, for cash on hand. Water, we came in at just over a million. The proposed budget, just about a million. And then, the business funds are all mixed in over here under the auditors, but we'll get to that one. So as you can see, water, we're in good shape there. And then sewer, I think we're like right on, just a little bit over that. So they want to see about $1 million on NMPP. We come up with just short of $1 million. And so, we feel comfortable there. The auditor adds all theirs together. They come up with, in just the business funds total, 3.9 million. Oh, the 9.2. Oh, sorry. Wrong one. They add theirs together, right there, 7.1 and 2.1. They come with 9.2 in their formulas. And we're just short of that one, for the audit one. But we feel comfortable, we have 8.4 there. We feel comfortable that balancing between our mechanism, NMPP's mechanism, and then the auditor, as long as we're in that range, we're in a good cash position. So we feel like the budget we're offering you, the budget we just completed, we continue to be in a good cash position. Nick, anything else to add on that?
No.
That's the, that's the cash sum situation.
Do your bond ra, have your bond ratings changed or the interest you pay?
Our, our bonds are unrated as far as, as far as when we, when we issue bonds for capital projects. Is that what you're asking about?
Yeah.
Yeah, they're unrated. But we, we've refunded two in the last two years, and we've gotten very, very good rates. And our, our interest expenses are going down.
Any other questions on the cash side? Again, we have no formal adopt policy, so we try to use a bunch of different measures to make sure that we're continuing to be in a good cash position. We don't want to find ourselves in the same situation like the auditors talked about in York just a year or so ago. We found ourselves in a pretty terrible cash position. So... That's where we're at. That's how we would end up the budget this year. And so, we'll dive right into the budget. And this is where I'll just kind of walk you through what we have in the memo. So, there we go. Alright, the first thing up is the general items. One of the first things we always talk about is benefits. In the last two years, we received a 0% increase on our health insurance premium for two years straight. This year, we received a 7.9% increase. That's due to we had a number of high claims last year, including one single medical claim over half a million dollars. As we know, last year, an item of concern was comparability. And we'll talk about that at the end of the budget. As the contribution for healthcare coverage stays stagnant in comparison to our other communities and their premiums continue to rise, that total contribution that we think of, that HRV, which is retirement, hourly wage, health insurance contribution. Those are the three things the CIR looks at and I use for comparability. If we stay stagnant on any of those, and usually retirement doesn't change year to year, that's a big thing to change. It's health insurance and wages. If we stay stagnant on health insurance and all the other premiums go up, the other cities start paying more and more for those premiums, it puts pressure on our wages. And you'll see that, and I'll show you that when we do comparability. That's something to note from those two years of stagnant health insurance costs.
So you know that line item is, has not been going up for us as part of the package, that we're going to, you're going to have to pay it in one, one way or the other. So even though we may save on, on our health premiums, we're, it actually doesn't help us in the big picture because that means that, that when you do the full comparability, we're going to be behind.
But we could pay them more.
You can't. But, but don't look at this item like, like we're gaining, like, like we're saving money. It's just going to come out of, the employee's going to benefit in a different way to make that, make up the difference.
And we try and keep that item in mind when we're renegotiating or looking at our health insurance coverage and premiums, how that affects comparability, because sometimes, maybe it is better to just give the health insurance contribution, or at least offer it, versus the direct wage. The health insurance, the increase in health premiums will allow comparable wages to be more in line. This time, so we're going to get a bump from that, that increase. Not significant, but a little bit of a bump for everybody for our offering. Nevertheless, we have provided for a few comparability changes in specific positions, which will be provided in a separate memo at the budget meeting tonight. I'll have that at the end. The COLA. This is the cost of living adjustment. The proposed budget has a 3.5% cost of living adjustment per guidance from the city council, personnel, finance, and audit committee. The administration reviewed the 12-month consumer price index, inflation rate, and relevant measures in June and July of each year to recommend a COLA for the budget. The July number available was 5.4%. The CPI and other measures are high again as energy prices have returned to higher rates. Other items, including food prices, have seen increase due to COVID-19 in recent months and the cost of shipping goods. The reason that 3.5 was offered, it's right in the average of other cities. So most of the cities I surveyed, through all the other city administrators, I saw threes and fours, threes and fours, threes and fours across the board.
Who said four?
What?
Who said four?
It's across the board. I mean, it could be Hastings. I mean, that was all city administrators. I didn't do a complete survey of just our specific ones. But it was about 50/50. So 3.5 is right in the middle of the guideline. It probably tended to be the more of the first-class cities we're at for. So... The other thing that was noted, that even though it is 5.4, is last year, it came in at zero, and we did give a one last year. And the CPI was a zero. So, that's the discussion. And members of the, of the committee are here if they want to speak to that. But the one offer here today is 3.5%. Once we get to the end of this budget and we talk about items that you have concerns on or individual things, then I'll go over comparability with you and walk you through that. Any questions on the COLA as of now? Okay. Uh, property worker, property insurance, workers' comp and liability insurance. The city anticipates increases in workers' comp coverage due to updated wage scales, added positions, and a small uptick in work injuries. Property insurance should remain relatively level, as no new major property holdings were made recently, like, I think about a year ago. We went through, did a whole assessment of what properties were owned by the city, working with our insurance provider, and so, there was a little bit of a bump from that, but we feel we're pretty confident everything is under the coverage. Uh, we just get a blanket coverage, but you wanna always ensure that all of your assets are included. We've had few significant liability claims in recent years, and that's also helped us, so. That's what's going on with insurance. From the administration standpoint, the major items of administration are the revenues of property tax and sales tax. Cities of Seward previously had our five-year review of all properties within the city in the last year. The city, and this was offered to you, this is the first one. When this was offered to you, uh, we noted a one percent increase in total valuation is what we did before, we received a valuation yesterday. So, Nick actually has that. Um, Nick, the valuation went from five hundred and forty-six million to five hundred and seventy-six million. Is that correct?
Yep.
Is it a new one?
That's the current, or that's with the final valuation up there, so that'll be different than what was in the back.
So, he offered you five hundred and fifty-two million, so that's gonna give us a little bit more of a bump than what you have in, in yours. Carl, do you have that open right now?
Where is it?
Uh. Line five oh one oh two, what was the original number? So, the original number that you saw in the bu, in the packet was one million, six hundred and sixty-two thousand, nine hundred and ninety-seven. And now, it is at one million, seven hundred and forty thousand, eight hundred and sixty-two, so. We're at the whim of the assessor, and we waited on their office to provide us that number. Uh, we did a lot of research, I don't know about you guys, but a lot of residents in my neighborhood didn't go up at all. It was a zero increase, so nobody got a letter, so, but apparently there was a large increase somewhere. We did research of Hughes Brothers, Tenneco, Pet Source, Orshlins. We thought of every commercial property, thought something might happen, but this is, this is good news for us, but there's apparently more valuation out there than we suspected, so. We'll continue to follow up on it and just re-verify some numbers, but, uh, it got better since we offered it to you last week, actually, with those official numbers yesterday, so. Agricultural land, I just wanna note this, agricultural land did go down significantly, which may lead to increased tax burdens placed on Seward residents by other taxing units. This would be potentially, and I don't wanna speak for you, Commissioner, but if their revenue, if their assessments go down significantly, just to hold even, they would have to raise the tax levies. Well, if our assessments stay the same, technically, we're gonna pay more if those levies go up. And so, that could be the school district and county potentially. And again, Commissioner, I don't wanna speak for you guys, but that's how it works for us here in the city, and I know Commissioner Zabrocka lives in the city as well, but uh, just so when people get their tax valuation in the city and they're like, my property taxes went up, well, we didn't increase the levy, and we didn't, so, as it's offered again. Uh, and that's, that's the next thing on here. Um, the recommended city levy in this budget remains point three one eight, and a total of point three five three, including the airport authority. So, for another year, we're gonna leave the levy alone. So, that's how we started it out, that's how we'd like to continue.
Make sure to report on the back for it, Ben.
Correct, we're not adjusting the levy.
Okay.
No increase to our levy.
Sounds good.
Thank you, Mr. Forbes. Um, the other significant, uh, any other questions on, on property taxes? Okay. As for sales tax, the cities experienced growth due to online sales tax being collected by all online retailers. That began in fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, to be pretty significant, was another good year for sales tax. But we're still not sure of the effects that COVID nineteen has had on this and spending habits. The other reason for limited sales tax growth is the continued payment of debt, uh, on our nineteen twenty bonded street projects, one of our largest bonds we hold. And that was to help pay for the improvements on Waverly Road, East Seward Street, and North Columbia resurfacing. These items will utilize available sales tax as part of our debt service for the next nine years, so. Sales tax outlook continues to look good, growth, but we don't wanna overpredict, so we still try to be conservative in our projections on this, but looks good. Any questions on the general revenues? Property tax, sales tax?
Occupation tax, who's charged that?
Who's in charge of that?
Like, who pays that?
Uh, occupation tax can be a number of things, they're predominantly, uh, franchise fees and things like that as well. But they're gonna be small fees, um, the fees that we charge for like Windstream to be in the right-of-way, some of those things. And then, you also have the franchise fees, which will relate to all the utilities for us, so. We charge a franchise fee to the general fund from the electric fund, from the water fund, from the wastewater fund, so. And Nick, do you know those percentages?
Uh, ten in electric and five in water and wastewater.
Have those increased recently?
No, we have not adjusted those. If anything, as we get down into those business funds, we would actually potentially recommend starting to ratchet them back. Uh, especially wastewater.
That, that down?
Yes, down. Leaving more money in those funds and taking less of it to hold up the general fund. And we think the general fund is in, as you've seen, a good cash position. And so, slowly reducing those helps to keep capital within, uh, the wastewater fund. And we'll kinda talk about this when we get there, but that's got the biggest project coming down the pipeline, so. Any other questions about revenues? I'll cycle through here. And you see there, that franchise fee at ten percent generates about one point one billion, uh, the water one creates ninety-two thousand, and wastewater creates almost eighty thousand in franchise fees. The electric one is the significant one. Mobile telephone, uh, occupation tax generate about seventy-five thousand is what we're projecting for this year's budget. On the, the one thing that wasn't noted in administration in regards to positions, uh, we did increase one position this year. This was talked about a few weeks back, when we added the deputy treasurer position. We also changed the job description for an account clerk three to a payroll clerk. And that position is mixed in here and included in the budget. That position will work for all, we spread that cost across all the departments, because they work for all of the utilities, so. Uh, it's kind of thinned out amongst all of them, but I did wanna note that was the one additional personnel.
I thought we were gonna, what's the one person, I hear they're wrong.
Bob Corr didn't request anybody this year, so. The only one, I think we had a slight request for an increase in seasonals. Just more months, I know street was one of them. But other than that, we fulfilled all requests by department heads, except this one, which was requested by this department head sitting next to me, so. Uh, as we spoke before, it's just to, to slide payroll off. Right now, payroll takes up at least two days of, of ten-day double work week for Nick. That is all he does, and so, I lose him for over two days, and he's not able to deeply work into the budget. Then he moves right into financials sometimes if it's the end of the month, so I'll lose another day there. And so, having an additional person that can help with payroll, front desk items, uh, claims, and kind of a lot of those, uh, accounting side things will really help. A lot of those are gonna slide to Julie, and then the lower stuff, like specifically just chasing people around the payroll sheets. And those are printed out every two weeks will be the responsibility of this payroll clerk.
So, how many positions are in this salary for administration, just one person?
I think that one's just me.
Yep, you, city council, mayor, is, that's.
That's what that was.
General.
Again, we're all split up, Nick, myself, um, billing clerk, we're spread across the different utilities, and then if we have responsibilities, we're slid into some of the departments. That's where most of them are in this administration for us. Now, I can answer any questions on the administrative budget, general fund budget?
I never stopped here.
City attorney increased our fees, thank you, city attorneys. They were due.
We put that contract up for bid.
What?
Should we put that contract up for bid?
The city attorney? We do not. Professional services? You don't have to, I mean, you can, you can bid anything out.
I thought we had done, I thought we had put it up for bids before.
City attorney?
Not that I know of.
Disappointed. Disappointed, so no, it would be, I mean, I, I could go out if I wanted to solicit bids and make the decision who to appoint. But there would be no adjustments moving forward unless it came from me.
It's the weird interaction of that's an appointed officer of the city.
Right.
Also.
Can you explain, I'm not, I don't get involved in this, so I don't know much about it, but like, is each department billed separately for their utilities and telephone and gas and trash and all of that, and so, that's how that comes on here?
Yep.
Are they individually billed also for like the G-Works and the BizCo and everything like that, or does it come in just one bill, and then you guys divide out how that's utilized?
Nick has a formula, an Excel file for each one of those, it's like BizCo, for instance. And we try to balance it based on the number of, usually it's based on the number of computers. So, if Parks and Rec has two computers, we'd allocate their percentage to them, and if we had six at city hall. And then, he just has Excel files for everything that comes in as one spread out. And it's different measures every time, so G-Works, there's some people that don't use it at all, but we also use the G-Works bill for like our time in attendance. And so, everybody utilizes the time in attendance system, and so, in that case, we'd probably balance that number based on the number of personnel you have. So, if you have the most, most personnel, that's the most people getting on there, interacting and using it, so you would get a bigger percentage of that.
Gotcha, yeah, thank you.
And then, that transfer to other funds, you'll see right there highlighted, that is an evened-out number, that is the, uh, deficient balance to the street fund. So, we take money from the general fund because we have to have a separate street fund, and we place it in the street fund every year. And you can see the previous balances we've transferred before. And that was at the rec, we didn't previously do this, this was at the recommendation of our auditor to balance it out.
By like a percentage, that you decide on that, or?
Uh, we basically just balanced it to zero, um, knowing that if, if there was any other deficiencies there, or deficiencies, if, if the fund balance was negative, basically, it would be covered by the general fund, so the idea, I guess, was basically to just keep it at a zero balance because anything, it didn't really make sense to transfer more money in there if, if it was just gonna be covered by the general fund anyway, so.
The last one we changed up here is previously the levy accreditation and any related capital improvements with it. We're previously in planning and zoning, and the planning and zoning budget is entirely a responsibility of Mr. Dorak behind me. And he has nothing to do with the levy. And so, we were like, how come we keep putting this in there? And then, every time you bring us your budget, you're like, I don't know what to do with the levy, I don't keep track of it, and so the levy is predominantly, for those that have been around, you know that it's been the responsibility of the street department, and they oversee the maintenance of it, they do the inspections. They go out with the Corps of Engineers for its annual inspection and make any changes. We didn't feel it was appropriate to put it in the street budget, because you can't utilize street funds to pay for it. You don't co-mingle street funds into something like that, because the state will have a coronary.
Wasn't Hughes involved in that though before? That's why it's probably in there, I think, wasn't John Hughes a part of that?
John may have helped oversee it back when he oversaw the street department and L and that, but now that it's Tim, Tim has nothing to do with it. It's entirely Bob Myers and his crew that oversee and keep track of it. So, to relieve his budget and how, this number is larger than his entire budget for planning and zoning. We felt the best place to put it, because the funds that's being paid for is the general fund, just put it in administration. That was where we felt secure in placing it, so it was covered by the general fund, but it wasn't the responsibility of, uh, Mr. Dorak anymore.
I think that's why.
So, and that ends the administrative budget, so, anywhere? So, we'll move on. Next up is Mr. Dorak again, billing inspections. Nothing too particular here, no significant changes, other than the municipal building will be getting a new plotter to replace the old one, which is located in that room with the light on. Uh, which is used up to use for life and is operating on Windows Seven, which is a security risk. So, we're trying to get rid of that thing. We're trying to make sure this budget, we clean up all our Windows Seven machines. We have a few that run because the software and hardware on it can, there is no replacement, so we're just trying to replace all those systems and hardware, so. The plotter is the next one to go, and I think we recently just got a new plotter over in the electric department a year ago. So, that is essentially, uh, the building inspections, they continue to do a great job on revenues, uh, outperforming our projections, but we still try to be conservative in our projections, so that we don't overshoot revenue expectations. Uh, Tim and Sarah do a great job over here, and, uh, continue to guide things and be the front face of our office, and if we ever get a door added to our building over here, we're still in line for that, we'll have a new front office for them and, and entryway for our customers, and then this door will be locked. Uh, except for those that need it for handicap access. Uh, again, no major, other than we slid the remodel to next year, so it's just the same amount, but pushed, or the remaining amount pushed into the other budget year. Uh, because we don't anticipate being built for that anytime soon. And then, you see their portion of the plotter there, and that completes the building and codes budget. Any questions on that one?
Stager plotter was divided between the three entities of building, planning, and engineer.
Yep.
Correct? And the remodel was also between the engineer and the planning design?
And streets. Three and rec and rec.
And rec, because they're all located in this building. They're cus, anybody that's a customer for them accesses through that door, right? Any other questions on building and codes? Next, we have CDVG economic development. Uh, this one's kind of gotten dormant, the only thing that'll be in there is we're anticipating, uh, and this is just a in and an out. So, we have three hundred thousand dollars just as a placeholder, we're hoping to get our DTR application in again this year. And so, this is just in and the out that we put for it, so. We'll continue to close the previous DTR out, but our hope is to get another application in and get started again. Any questions on CDVG? And our revolving loan fund, as you remember, went away, so that one has been doled out, and then we're, any repayment funds on that will go back to send, per se, to the agreement. Cemetery, uh, we'll be purchasing additional gravel for cemetery for roadways, five thousand dollars. And the big one here is a new online system, as recommended by the cemetery staff, the cemetery board. And we also, the two local funeral homes also sent letters of support in purchase of this, this, uh, new software. The software, oh, Steve, I'm getting all crazy here. The software is approximately twenty-five thousand, it's a mapping system that will give us online access to all of the plots up there. It will give real-time ability for the funeral homes and anyone viewing it to see which ones are available and which ones aren't. One of the biggest reasons that the funeral homes would like to have this availability is if they have somebody coming in in the evenings, on the weekends, Kent John aren't out there. There is no way to go out there and verify if something is available. And have somebody see it and secure it that day.
So, we're not gonna just use the map on the wall?
No.
Anymore?
We'll still refer to that just to double-check sometimes. The other one is, is we're doing a bit of, uh, extra work, and that's usually done by Julie at city hall. By having this system, that will also free her up, she won't have to do any of the extra legwork that's involved, uh, in the process. It'll also give us the availability at some point to help with genealogical societies and things like that. We'll have an online portal for them to go in and do research and things like that as well, so. Uh, it will make it more efficient for John and Kent out there. The cemetery board, uh, likes the availability that it provides, also the genealogical element, and both funeral homes in town uh, said that it will significantly help them in sales and, and that process. You have a grieving family, you're like, hey, I know that you're here for this meeting, but we just can't get out there till tomorrow, so you're gonna come back tomorrow, and we'll go back out there uh, and, and take a look at it and see what we can find, so, um. I, that's, are there questions on that one? Other than that, nothing major within the, um, budget there.
Is that mapping system then what creates the web cemeteries, five thousand dollars for technology? Is that like their ownership fee or whatever? Uh, five sixty-five point five three?
This one right here.
Yep.
Yeah.
That was my understanding, that that was like their annual service agreement for that, yeah.
Other questions on the cemeteries?
Are those, are those costs recovered in the cost of the plots?
Not really. We're still heavily subsidizing the cemeteries, so. We could increase costs, we could bring those costs back to you if you'd like to look at them or have the cemetery board look at, at what we're charging and putting in the perpetual care fund. One of the things we talked about was utilizing some of those funds, but the cemetery board hadn't voted on it. They just kind of poked around with it. We have two funds, the perpetual care fund and then what was the other one?
The land sales development fund.
The, yeah, the fund that we utilize from the sale of the land along North Columbia. We put those into a special fund as well, and so we could utilize some of those funds to help offset these costs.
How do you pay for like, I mean, the roads come out of perpetual fund, the?
When designated.
Okay.
So right now they're not designated, we're just paying out general funds. But previously in the past, they had pulled from the perpetual care, or was it the?
Land.
The land fund.
Maybe at some future time we could get just kind of an overview report of how this all works and take a look at it all.
So when you say you're holding it, you're holding it by that one fifty, right?
Holding it?
You're saying that you're holding the cemetery?
Yes, yes, we, they're deficit spending, they don't bring in enough revenue to cover their costs. Yep. Kind of like the pool, golf course, and these are amenities that the city has taken over, that we just fund through our taxes.
We're negotiating.
There was also a strange reference that we noticed when we were going back through to some taxing authority that I don't believe we utilize. It's the same taxing authority, you just use this authority versus general fund authority, but we didn't dig into it a lot, so. It's one, one pocket or the other, so. We didn't get too far into that when we started looking through these different plots. If that was a, a revenue source that you wanted us to investigate before, then?
Not necessarily as a revenue source, I just love, would like a, a report on exactly where all the pieces fit together.
At the cemetery?
Yeah.
Alright, we'll continue to move on. Civic Center. I'll start the civic center with noting that the civic center is the beneficiary of the Langworthy Trust. And so our cost for this, as long as they're approved.